This program is recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire School Board Meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
All right, let's start the Board of Education meeting tonight. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Secretary Iverson, have we complied with the open meetings law tonight?
Yes, we have.
Thank you. Could you please do a roll call to verify core?
Commissioner Dux.
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Luganbill.
Here.
Commissioner Spindler.
Here.
Commissioner Vu.
Here.
Commissioner Jean.
Here.
All right, thank you. Next up is the public forum. We've got a few people on for tonight. Just remember the rules. We have about a four-minute limit individually, thirty minutes total. So come on up and state your name. I'll just announce you as you come, but when you come up, state your name and your address. First, I have Carol Craig. Come on up, Carol. Somewhere, I recognize that name. I'm not sure.
(inaudible) sit there.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity. I think I'm more nervous on this side of the mic than I was on your side.
Turn the mic on, please.
Oh, yes.
Okay, Carol.
Oh.[101.22][101.22](laughing) I don't think I've ever been, oh, at this mic before. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to address the board. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the resolution that you'll be considering under your committee report. The resolution is for RAVE, Register and Vote Eau Claire. It's a nonpartisan citizens group that is really designed and dedicated solely for increasing voter registration in Eau Claire County. We will be doing that by providing trained registrars at various locations. We will be doing that by providing information regarding voting requirements. Actually, this got started probably about four months ago after a variety of conversations over the last two years about all the changes that have taken place for voter requirements, whether it be the time limits that we have, absentee voting, what you need to bring in order to show proof of your current resident, and then lastly, of course, the voter ID, which is in full swing right now. So a group of individuals got together and said, "We really need to provide information." And so we went to the Alliance for Strong Communities, and the Eau Claire School District is a member of the Alliance for Strong Communities, and we asked them to sponsor this initiative. It's one of twenty-six initiatives that they've sponsored in the Eau Claire area. I put a list of those initiatives on your desk. I hope I wasn't too brazen to do that. So you get a sense of what the Alliance really is intending to do, and that is to provide information and programs that really support public structures and specifically public structures and concerns that citizens have. So with that in mind, what we're going to be doing is providing training in a variety of different venues, and we've gone through to the Eau Claire City Council and asked them to support the idea. Really, the resolution is asking you to support the initiative, to support the idea, to embrace this as an important step in helping citizens in Eau Claire County become part of the democratic process. The Eau Claire City Council passed it, the Altoona City Council passed it, the Altoona School Board passed it, the Eau Claire County Board passed it, and we would ask that you would consider passing it tonight. Information is really powerful, and this is about providing information for all our residents in Eau Claire County on a nonpartisan basis so that when we have four elections coming up this next year, people are ready to vote. So I will be here tonight. If you have any questions, I will be glad to answer them. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so Lauren Glassbrunner, please come up.
Hello. I'm Lauren Glassbrunner. I'm a senior at North High School as well as North Student Council President for 2016. I got involved with the RAVE initiative, first of all, because I believe that it is my job to help improve my school and to bring things like this into my school. And also, as I am turning eighteen this year, I'm also excited to have the privilege of being able to vote in not only these local elections that I know are coming up, but also this year's presidential election. Even though I took AP Government last year, there is still a lot that is fuzzy about voter registration in my mind, and I'm sure that everyone, every one of my peers also has the same feeling towards voters and voter registration. It concerns me that this confusion about what to bring and where to register and everything is enough to deter a great majority of my peers from allowing their opinion to be heard by registering to vote and then voting. It says in the RAVE resolution that the Eau Claire County is ranked forty-ninth of seventy-two Wisconsin counties in voter turnout. An increase in young adult voters can definitely positively impact this rank. Also, there is much new legislation that I'm sure many people are unaware of that needs to be made aware. An example, there is new legislation in Wisconsin effective in 2014 that allows seventeen-year-olds to be registered and to vote in the presidential primary if they will be eighteen by the actual election, and that is a very, not a very well-known fact. This is amazing as it opens the doors to many more kids, and it isn't that well-known. I'm excited and encouraged that when I mentioned speaking at this meeting and RAVE's initiative to my peers, their immediate excitement. It is reassuring that RAVE will make sure that we are registered to vote correctly. It takes away the insecurity and the nervousness surrounding voting, and I have no doubt that it will increase voter efficacy and that we will learn what needs to be done to register, and that it's not a bunch of hoops that we need to jump through to scare us away from voting. I know that no matter what, that I will be voting in the upcoming election, but it's those who aren't certain that we are trying to also encompass. By bringing registration to Eau Claire schools, we are giving an accessible way for young adults to be involved in their community and their country, bring a direct responsibility to us, making us feel like we have a responsibility and a power to influence the world around us. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Lauren. Emily, come on up. Just state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Emily Way, thirty-seven twelve Forest Hill Drive. So I am also a senior, but I go to Memorial High School, and I'm the vice president of our student council there. And just kind of going off of what Lauren said, even when just looking at the demographics, when we studied it in my AP Government class last year, it's evident that the voter turnout rate for ages eighteen to twenty-four is the lowest turnout rate, and that rate is even decreasing. And it's just very stunning because that group makes up a large part of the population, and it will in turn be the most impacted in the future. And with the help of RAVE, we as students would like to implement voter registration at local public high schools and provide nonpartisan information to fellow students about candidates and upcoming elections. And as Lauren mentioned, many of our peers are unaware of where to go, what to bring, or even how to vote when they head off to the voting booths. And it's just very alarming for me as a young adult that those people aren't having their opinions heard when I know that they do have an opinion and it should matter. And this is why with the help of RAVE, we would like to provide all students in the public school district the opportunity and the ability to be informed and confident voters. Some ideas we have for our schools in partnership with RAVE include having just cards given off to students on what to bring to vote, because I know with, even as a senior heading off to college with like address changes and whatnot, I don't really know how to, how I would go about that. So just giving that information to students would be very helpful. Even just providing visual maps throughout the school or in like civic classrooms that would show students where they should vote, where, based on where they live, and as well as student council members. I know we've talked with Carol about this, is getting actual students, so seniors that are on the student council, would have the opportunity to be certified to register fellow students to vote. So I know a few of us will be taking a class within the next month so that we can register our fellow students, which is really exciting. So simply, we just want to provide students with the information on upcoming elections, the candidates, what is being voted on in referendums, what candidates stand for, so that we know as students that what we believe in is actually going to happen in our government. And so simply just having RAVE members come in to speak to civic classes or AP Government classes, as well as just high school seniors about upcoming elections and referendums, would encourage students to turn out, and we believe overall, increase the voting turnout rate and just have our voices be heard. Even just looking at the school board's mission statement and vision statement, I really can't think of a better way to promote responsible citizenship and post-secondary success than to create civically active students now. Thank you.
Wonderful, thanks, Emily. Thank you both, and thanks, Carol. Appreciate the discussion.
I know.
That's the three on the public forum. Next, we have the superintendent's report. Go ahead.
I have a very short report for you tonight because I'll be talking to you later about referendum planning and communication strategies. And right now, I just want to go over the upcoming Board of Education events. On January eleventh, there will be a meeting of the Parent Advisory Council, and that will be held here at 7:00 PM in the Administration Building. On January twelfth, there will be a meeting of the Schools Start Time Committee, which begins at 4:00 PM here at the Administration Building. On January fourteenth, at 3:30 PM, there will be a meeting of Demographic Trends and Facilities Committee, and that will take place at Roosevelt Elementary School. On January eighteenth, at 10:30 AM, and the Administration Building Policy and Governance Committee will meet, and the Budget Development Committee will be meeting sometime this month, but that is at a date to be determined. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. I have really nothing for the president's report, except just to let everyone know, I have to leave for a personal matter in just a little while, but I'll pass it over to our vice president when I have to go. Student rep report, Jason, looks like you're here alone tonight. Go ahead.
So the week before break, we had a few, many things going on. Partners Club had their Salvation Army bell ringing in the Memorial Cafeteria, and the German Club had their traditional gingerbread house making, and Holiday Club had their little get-together as well. The big event was the holiday concert, and that was met with positive reviews, lots of reviews, good reviews, because we decided to parallel, in some ways, the theme of the concert to the Star Wars movie that came out.[748.43][748.43](laughing) So that was pretty good. And I want to thank Emily for coming up to speak today, and on behalf of our Emily, my Emily, I would like to thank Lauren for coming up to speak today for the community forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. One thing Commissioner Johnson mentioned to me is that tomorrow, if you are thinking of running for school board in the spring, tomorrow is the due date for those papers, 5:00 PM, 4:00 PM? 5:00 PM tomorrow, so if you're thinking of doing that. Thank you. Board committee reports, policy and governance, first, I think we can do. Commissioner Luganbill?
Things are in full swing. We met this morning. We moved to approve a number of policies to bring them to you. Policy four forty-seven point one. Policy one thirty-three on board vacancies, we sent back again to Steve Weld for further review. We're running into some, you know, things we just want to make sure we have tightened up. We're looking at, we did move to bring policy three forty-two point seven. That's a new policy. It's on ELL programs and services. To take that to the January eighteenth board meeting for discussion and possible first reading. And at our next meeting as a committee, we'll be discussing fraud and the administrative team policies, and then we'll be looking at changes to policy four forty-one, equal education opportunities specifically regarding transgender students. We've been having some research done on that, so that's what I've got.
Great, sounds good. I don't think any other committees have met, correct? Okay, all right. Commissioner Hamburg Boyle, legislative update, please.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have a lot to talk about tonight except a couple things, and one we can pat ourselves on the back for. There is a public hearing on CPR mandate bill Wednesday. There's a bill authored by Pachowski and Spiros requiring school board to provide instruction in carotpulmonary and cardioceverebral resuscitation in any health education course offered to pupils in grade seven to twelve, and to provide instruction about automated external defibrillators to pupils in grade seven to twelve beginning in the seventeen eighteen school year. Under current law, school boards and operators of independent charter schools and governing bodies of private schools is required to offer the instruction. This expands that. But one good thing about this, as I read through the information, was this is really also being pushed by the American Heart Association, who is willing and has indicated it is prepared to invest the seventy-five thousand dollars, because again, this was not funded, to provide each CISA in the state with a hundred kits of mannequins and training DVDs for using in training students. So there's a nice collaboration there on that one. And the other one I pulled off today was the Happy New Year from Wisconsin Association of School Boards, of which everyone can go and look at the legislative updates at WASB.
Or.
Very good. And they had, they had a recommendation and a proposal that school boards should discuss at least one legislative proposal or issue at every school board meeting, and we do that, so we should be very glad about that. So they also have the list in there, which I'm not going to go through, but they're hoping to get through most of all the bills and their proposals by the middle of February to send people home to their districts because of the upcoming elections. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. Thank you.
Great, as usual, great report. Thank you. Okay, so next is our consent resolution agenda. The items on this agenda have either been discussed before or relative routine matters. We'll vote on them all at once unless a board member decides to pull one to vote on separately. So I would consider a motion to approve the Human Resources Employment Report. I would consider a motion to approve the Head Start Continuation Grant.
Can we pull that one?
Okay. I would consider a motion to approve the Revisions to Policy four twenty-four, Open Enrollment. I would consider a motion to approve the Revisions to Policy three thirty-two on Charter Choice Programming Committee.
I so move.
Okay, so a motion from Commissioner Dux. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Jean on all of those except the Head Start Continuation Grant. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so Commissioner Hamburg Boyle, you pulled the Head Start Continuation Grant. Go ahead.
I did. I just wanted to pull it to publicly say that, as I read through the Head Start Grant goals and objectives, they totally address everything that we are as a district, and using their data to pull up the fact that they have a goal to increase kids attendance because it was directly related to what their data said about their reading scores or their pre-literacy reading scores, that I appreciate it as a board, as a board, all the work that has gone into this, and the fact that we do have Head Start within our school district, which a lot of districts can't be, aren't that lucky. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. So we have a motion to approve that, then?
So moved.
We have a motion to, from Commissioner Hamburg Boyle, a second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Vu. I think, let's have a roll call vote on this, please.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We have one individually considered resolution tonight, and that's about the school programs not available for open enrollment. We do this at this time of year, every year. The, I can just summarize it quickly. The administration recommends, due to limited capacity, no seats being available for the following schools and educational programs. Those are the Chippewa Valley Montessori Charter School and the special education students who are programmed in the general education setting less than forty percent of the time. I don't know if the administration has any comments on this or anything to say about it. Okay. Board members, any questions on this? Commissioner Johnson?
So when students or parents, families apply to open enroll to other elementary schools, is that, how is that different than the Montessori Charter School?
Because there are, there's more interest with resident students in our Chippewa Valley Montessori School than seats are available, and because of their enrollment timeline, it didn't coincide to have open enrollment occur into June when official placements are made or can start to be offered compared to their, when they need to finalize their local applications. So that school, we just simply say no seats are available to the outside. At the elementary level, we have a big enough pool of space available that we're able to place students in the district where space is available, because not all of our elementary schools, our conventional programs are full.
So if someone applies for open enrollment as an elementary student, they apply to the district as an elementary student, and they may request a school where we have some space issues, but then they're redirected to a school with available space?
That's correct.
So that would be the same for the high schools as well? They, if a high school student applied and we say there's, you know, more space at North than Memorial, you can direct them to North, and we don't need to do anything special like we do for Montessori?
That's correct. At the elementary level, we try to, and at the middle and high school levels in the past, we've tried to place students based on geographic location of their home district, but there's no requirement to do so. So we could make a determination that all high school placements, for example, would be at North High School and not at Memorial High School. No policy, that's just a placement decision the district owns.
And same with the elementary. If we've got four schools identified as getting crowded, then we can say we need you to go to one of the other eight.
That's correct. We try to put them in close proximity, again, to their geographic location, but we monitor what the class sizes are in those schools, and we typically make decisions based on, at the time a decision has to be made, which grade level has the lowest enrollment, and that's where we would place students. Sometimes there are some exceptions to that, trying to keep families together, but that's not always possible.
Excellent questions. Good. Any others? Any other discussion? Okay, I think we'll just do a voice vote on this. So we have before us the schools and programs that will not be open for open enrollment. All those, I could use a motion for that, excuse me. Go ahead. A motion to approve this?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Luganbill?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Jean. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion passes. I'm going to leave now for my personal matter. I'll let Commissioner Dux handle from now on. Thank you very much, everybody, and have a good meeting. You, yes, you want this?
The next thing on our agenda is the RAVE draft resolution. Do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved. Oh, discussion first, right?
This is not an action. It's not. Okay. Well, can we read it? So we're not going to vote on it?
Catherine, these are committee reports. We've moved to the committees, so if...
Okay, would somebody read it, though?
If people are inclined to. If anybody has any opposition, I can't imagine why you would.
Well, I, I think it would be nice for the audience and the TV that we would have it read. So would you read it?
Yeah, before we do, I want to make the note that this initiative has a Facebook page, so once we do approve this, or, you know, at the next meeting or around the same time, I'm being presumptuous. I would like us to share that link on all of our social media to get the word out, because that page is going to be, as they alluded to, with the trainings going on, it's going to be sharing that information as events, and it will also be sharing resources available to voters.
Thank you. Can you read it? I can read it. Huh? I'll read it. Thank you for considering the resolution supporting the RAVE initiative in Eau Claire County. This initiative originated as a re... Oh, the other one. Sorry.
(laughing) Thank you, though.
Don't we have it on the...
It's on there, it's on there, too.
That's okay, I can read it from up there, I think. I have new glasses, so I think that'll work. It's a little transition problem here, okay. My problem. Where, draft resolution, whereas a nonpartisan citizen initiative designated Register and Vote Eau Claire, RAVE, was formed with the intent of increasing voter registration and election participation in Eau Claire County and is supported by the Alliance for Strong Communities Greater Eau Claire Area, whereas each citizen's right to vote is guaranteed by the United States Constitution as well as the State of Wisconsin's Constitution, whereas changes in regulations governing Wisconsin citizens' voter registration requirements, documents, and procedures necessitate efforts to inform citizens of their qualifications for voter registration, whereas the National Civic League has awarded the city of Eau Claire an All-American City designation as a national model for reflecting the principles of democracy, whereas research has demonstrated that increased voter participation is a sign of strong communities and governmental effectiveness, whereas facilitating eighteen-year-olds to register as voters serve as a culmination of civics instruction within our school's social studies curricula and fulfills the legislative ideal of increased civic literacy among the state citizens, whereas citizens between the ages of eighteen and twenty-five nationally demonstrate the lowest voter participation, whereas Eau Claire County ranked forty-ninth of the seventy-two Wisconsin counties for registered voter participation in the last gubernatorial election. That's all right. Got it. Whereas Eau Claire County aspires to attain the highest level of citizen involvement and voter participation in all elections and to improve its ranking for registered voter participation, and, whereas citizens who exercise their voting privilege increase the likelihood of effective and responsive governmental decisions at all levels, now therefore be it resolved, the Eau Claire Area School District School Board hereby supports the efforts of RAVE to provide citizen information regarding voter registration, voter ID requirements, early voting, and absentee ballot options within Eau Claire County. Approved by a vote of the Eau Claire School District School Board. Ta-da. Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the public? We've kind of done that. And the WASB delegate resolution? Oh, sorry, Carol.
I would just like to make the comment that, relative to the high school involvement, RAVE certainly will take all direction from the high school principals, from the AP Government teachers, student council. We don't have a planned program where there is resources, and certainly will adhere to any policies or school directives that there may be. So I just wanted to be clear on that. I don't know that we really stated that clearly, so I wanted to make sure that was understood. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the WASB delegate resolutions. Are you going to lead that discussion? We can discuss the pros and cons or kind of have a consensus of ideas so that you have some direction for the WASB conference. All right. Well, I, I've been through it pretty thoroughly. I don't know if other people have looked at it as well, so I need your input. The one that thrilled me the most was the resolution regarding restoring the two-thirds state funding and increase the primary guarantee value per member. I mean, that is in here, so any other input?
Lots.
Good.
No, well, so obviously WASB is very practical and very focused in their, you know, targeting their efforts on issues that are currently arising, but, and you mentioned the two-thirds funding, but it always seems to me that we're reacting with these resolutions instead of really advocating for what's good for schools, and so, you know, when they're talking about, you know, eligibility in the voucher program, why can't we just be opposed to it? You know, take like clearer stance, and so when you're arguing some of these things on the floor, I guess I would encourage you to say, "We oppose vouchers, but if they're going to be around, yes, here's one of the things that we want to do related to vouchers." And, you know, revenue limits. We need a new funding formula. You should listen to Tony Avers, but if you're not going to do that, then there's this, you know, so I think that, I would like you to remind them that these tiny little issues with the... with this bigger problem, that doesn't mean that we've accepted the bigger problems.
I've had that conversation with WASB and that's why I, I tend to use them as a bipartisan vehicle for the discussion and information that I give because in their explanation to me is they represent almost all the school districts in Wisconsin and there are many school districts or board members that have different thought processes. So certainly I would say, I agree with you about the voucher piece, but again, I would, that's why I've testified at, at the state meetings and in front of the legislature and the assembly and the senate because that's really where you can be specific. But I, I hear where you're coming from, Wendy.
Well, yes, and you're always going to have some dissent. You're never going to have 100% of board members, let alone 100% of boards, in support of, you know, any particular resolution, but as the Association of School Boards for public schools, I mean, why would we want to say, "Yeah, let's have vouchers"? Like, that doesn't even make sense. So I hope that you will be very pro-education and, you know, advocate for those, the bigger picture.
Mr. Luganville?
Okay. One that I didn't agree with was 1613, 16-13. It might, it might make more sense in other school districts, but for Eau Claire, the citizens that are really engaged in our district are still very much looking at the newspaper. And so having this be to forego that entirely and just post on social media, I love social media. I use it for school board quite frequently, but I didn't support that resolution because a lot of people need access to that information and to our notices that we put out there and if we're limiting that, that's cutting off a certain segment of people.
That's true, but the last number I heard of circulation was 18% in our community and so I, I supported a change there, but if the rest of you feel that you want to still post, you know, that's fine. Let's go through from the top and read what it is and then if you want to comment, just turn your light on, all right? 1601 is revenue limit flexibility and time to adjust to state law changes. Are there any comments about 1601? If not, 1602, referendum approval to transfer public schools to private school operators.
At least it's a referendum.
I think I'm going to be sick. Okay. And anybody want to comment on that? 1603, private schools eligibility to participate in the statewide voucher program. Any comment?
This one specifically says that they need to be in existence for at least five years before they can participate in the voucher program. That is a change, so I don't agree with vouchers, period, but this is, that's, that's...
It leads, it leads you right into a snare, I'm afraid. So I guess I vote no on that, but...
But, but right now it's not five years, so you see, they've got you...
Either way.
Yeah, they've got you either way, so if you want them to be a voucher school right away or wait five years, I guess you take the least of the two, right?
We are accepting public comments, so if you hear something that you're just feeling strongly about, please come up. Resolution 1603, we did that. 1604, maintenance of effort. Do you want to comment on...
I, I always listened to maintenance of effort with Robbins. I was explaining the maintenance of effort and what this just says is WASB supports the change in the IDEA Act to allow local school districts to reduce spending attributable to the maintenance of effort without penalty when it reduces its spending on employment-related benefits provided to school personnel. So they're at least trying, trying to pair, pair that. Abby, do you want to talk a little bit about that? Can, yeah?
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah, if you'd like me to, Commissioner Hemmackboyle. So every year, as part of our flow-through grant program, we have to compare what did we spend on special ed education out of the grant from last year to this year and we're required to spend more if we have more students, if we have less students, that dollar amount per student has to be spent more and so we have to look at that every single year as far as it goes with DPI. And when Act 10 came into play, that affected a lot of the school districts because we had employees picking up their share of health insurance and WRS, which they hadn't in the past, so that was a savings to the district, but their maintenance of effort was affected. And so there are very few exceptions to meeting, there's four tests and you have to pass one of the four tests in order to be in compliance with maintenance of effort. And so it was very hard for districts to meet their maintenance of effort when Act 10 went into play. So there are a few exceptions and this, what this is saying is actually very good because the other thing is when you have a change in staff people, when you have a retiree and you have a new person coming in that might, you know, you might have somebody on the high end of the salary schedule and on the low end of the salary schedule coming in, that's an allowable exception, but if you make changes to your health insurance or any of your benefit plans, there wasn't an exception in the past for that. And so this is allowing an exception for that because that's happened to many school districts. I can say for Eau Claire, we've been able to always pass at least one of the tests without having to go to the special exceptions, but this makes sense to me and I think it's a good thing for districts that may struggle meeting those maintenance of effort requirements.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next resolution, 1605, creation of a statutory mechanism to allow districts to set aside funds in trust for the purchase of long-term fixed assets. Abby, do you want to comment on that one?
This would be in addition to our working capital. I take it as.
Let me read it really close and see if I can help you.
It sounded good to me, but...
Yeah, I, I agree with what you're saying. They're just trying to say that you can, instead of, it looks like you're trying to designate part of your fund balance for specific uses for those bigger things and you kind of, it looks like you can accumulate it maybe over a couple of years because obviously those are some really big purchases. So I'm not sure that we've ever done anything like that here because, you know, if you think about school bus, we contract with student transit, but it would make sense for some districts that have their own transportation type items.
Some of the other examples they gave in here, just for people in the audience, would be phone systems or other technology items with a useful life of more than one year when purchased in bulk. So I mean, it just gives you some more flexibility.
Yeah, I like that one. Resolution 1606, increase special education categorical aid reimbursement to 33%. Amend existing resolution 2.31 as follows. Anybody? You like it? Okay, we had a yes, O'Hara and I had a yes. 1607, restore two-thirds state funding and increase primary guarantee value per member. I said yes.
I have to kind of laugh on this one because I think it's always a resolution, just never gets to two-thirds funding, but I don't remember the last time we had two-thirds funding. I think it was back in 93 with the three-legged stool. We were supposed to have two-thirds funding and the QEO and, and I think, what, a year it lasted? I just had to say that, but we're all for it, though, right?
Yeah. Resolution 1608, sparsity aid. Can you explain that?
Sparsity aid has to do more with our rural, doesn't it? Our little rural, rural, our rural school districts. Yep. Which I know Catherine Byno's worked on that as well, but I, I think it is to help the smaller school districts.
Resolution 1609, sliding scale funding formula adjustment. I'm not sure I understand that one.
Well, this one is, when I read it through, is just another way of being able to have districts, districts funded better. It's a different formula factor multiplier to increase the membership of districts for revenue limit purposes. So there are some districts, right, that have their property taxes, so they, they get very little and this will help them at least get something with, with funding.
Resolution, thank you.
Yeah, awaited enrollment, yeah.
Any comments? Resolution 1610, student assessment. WASB supports statewide implementation of a uniform, reliable statewide assessment that would not be modified for a period of years, sufficient to effectively evaluate the performance of all publicly funded students in the state regardless of whether those students attend a public school, charter school, or private voucher school.
And I think the rationalization behind this one is it has changed so many times in the last two, three years, we're not able to use long, long-term data. What, what's the term? I don't have, Jim.
The, because the tool has changed, it puts into question the validity of the tool in terms of, of whether or not the correct percentage of students are meeting benchmark. And it's also, they're, they're based on a different set of standards. So the WKC was based on all set of standards. The Badger was based on the Common Core, so the switching and, and then now the Wisconsin Ford is somewhat of a hybrid, so it's been, it's, it's led to some confusion.
And we don't get longitudinal data because we're not comparing apples to apples, so it just kind of sets us back.
State mandated...
Before we move on?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Hemmackboyle, I would, in one of your future, in one of your future legislative reports, maybe you can tell us kind of as it unfolds, what the new Elementary and Secondary Education Act, now that we don't have No Child Left Behind, what those, I mean, a lot of the testing mandates came from that and so now that it's gone, do we really need to have, you know, as much testing as we have in the past? Do we really need to compare on a report card from school district to school district? So I guess I'd like to know kind of the impact of, as it unfolds.
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, I, I can do that. I mean, I'm reading through it. How many pages is it?
And Mike Thompson has been circulating the different CISA's, sharing that message so that we're all in a learning phase right now.
Resolution 1611, state mandated graduation requirements. WASB supports local school board control for determining high school graduation standards and the assessments that will be used to issue a high school diploma. If the state requires assessments for graduation, those assessments should be fully funded by the state. I laughed when I read that.
They are, they're, they need to be more direct. Don't have a high school graduation test that you're going to impose on us. I mean, that's what it means, right? So just say it.
I'll tell them, Wendy, honest.
I think this is also addressing the civics test.
I was going to say that. The civics test paid for?
Resolution 1612, use of electronic communication to notify parent of child's truancy. Any comment?
Say, those of you that have kids in the, you know, system, how is that working out for you guys?
Well, none of my children have been truant, so I haven't gotten a letter, but we still do get mail, but I can imagine it would be more efficient to get it electronically so your child couldn't intercept it at the mailbox.
But what about the families that don't have?
Well, I'm sure you'd have to sign up as an option.
Maybe. Resolution 1613, elimination slash reduction of newspaper notice publishing requirements. Mr. Luganville has already commented on that, as have I, so. Resolution 1614, mental health supports. The WASB supports the provision of state funding adequate to address the shortage of mental health professionals in our state qualified to address the needs of school-aged children and young adults. Provide adequate professional mental health supports in our schools and our communities and permit schools to enter into effective partnerships with agencies that are involved with mental health to provide for school-based mental health programs that could provide services, including but not limited to the following, which is a very long list that I will not read. Any comments about that?
I have a couple. Eau Claire's already doing this. I think as a board member, though, when I read this resolution, I'd like to know if we have enough funding to do what we do need because that would be information I could offer on the floor. So I would say, no, we don't have enough funding to do this and we're seeing more and more students with this need, needing more immediate attention. And sometimes it's just very difficult to get kids into the pipeline where they can get treatment. This is a real need, not only for our school district, but across the state. And the immediacy, when you need immediacy, it's not quite there.
Resolution 1615, transfer of territory from one district to another. WASB supports the following changes to statutes relating to and governing transfers of territory from one school district to another. Do you want to talk about that?
I, I think when this was talked about, and I, I don't know, remember who I was talking to about it, somebody from WASB, this is always been there, hasn't it? Maybe it's the first time it's been in a resolution. Yeah. I think too that this comes up because some smaller districts are really struggling and so that comes up as well. The rationale, it says in here, would advance this resolution, decide whether to support various changes to the statutes governing transfers of territory from one district to another to broaden the ability of voters in the affected districts to approve or disapprove. So what they really want to do is bring the community voice in on the decision.
Resolution 1616, the last one, prevailing wage. WASB supports legislation to allow a school board to reinstate the state prevailing wage law through local board policy. It was repealed in January of, it's to be repealed in January 2017.
It just gives the flexibility to districts to do it if they want to.
Any other comments about this, these resolutions?
I had one. I just want people in the audience and the, the media to know that the recommendations coming from WASB isn't just WASB. They have a statewide committee and they have a resolutions committee, so there's lots of people represented on bringing this forward. Then we take these resolutions to the delegate floor and they're voted on again and debated on the floor. So just so you know, there's lots of input as to where these came from, okay?
Thank you very much. The next committee report is Referendum Planning Timeline and Communications Plan. Dr. Hardbeck.
Okay, so, the...
Okay, so, the object tonight, or our objective, is to look at a possible timeline and a communication strategy if we were to propose a referendum for the November eighth, two thousand sixteen election. And I base this timeline on the discussion that you had at your last meeting. So, um, what we're going to do is, is kind of go through where we have been to this point. So, with four hundred and fifty to three hundred days before the election, you're trying to determine your needs and estimate your costs. Uh, in December and February, through February of two thousand fifteen, there was a district-wide assessment of operations with an emphasis on teaching and learning to improve student achievement. And this, uh, system assessment was conducted by an outside group, the Consortium for Educational Change. And they came up with a number of recommendations, uh, one being that we needed a strategic plan to help us operationalize the goals that the district had set. Um, and to, uh, create more definition around what's tight in our district, what's loose in terms of the management, um, and also to create, um, oh, clearer lines of authority and communication. Uh, so this was all going toward improving the way that we operate and service the schools and the students and families that we work with. February through May, we went through our annual budget planning. And this was when we learned that we had a budget deficit projected for the next three years, estimated at three point five million dollars per year. Um, in May of two thousand fifteen, fourteen buildings were identified by HSR architects to address safety and security needs. Um, and the schools are listed there for you. Um, and these needs go from everything, from having visible entrances to fire alarms, to paving of parking lots, uh, playgrounds, uh, replacement of HVAC, um, all of those types of items that lead to a more safe and secure environment for our staff and for our students. Demographic and trends met throughout this, uh, winter and spring. Um, and in their report to the board, they recommended, um, the capital referendum might be considered, uh, with priority given to improvements at South, to kind of bring it up to where DeLong is, possibly looking at, um, some type of overhaul of Roosevelt to address their capacity issues, and then other maintenance items, uh, that were deemed a priority by the Facilities Administration. And many of those items had been identified in the five-year capital improvement plan, and many of those items had been deferred over the course of years. So, it was kind of like we were at a point where things were just building up in terms of our facility needs. Uh, they also asked us to look at open enrollment, closing schools to intra-district transfers, uh, to implement overflow policies as ways to alleviate, uh, crowding in the elementary schools. And they also talked to us about, uh, as we did tonight, uh, closing, uh, Memorial to open enrollment and, uh, moving, uh, any new open enrollees to North as a way of addressing the disparity, uh, in enrollment there. From June through October, we did further identification of, uh, district needs. Uh, various survey results were reported to the board. Um, parent survey, our family survey, uh, student engagement survey, uh, senior exit survey, which helped to identify areas of interest uh, for program and, uh, improvement and development. Um, we had our staff working conditions, uh, survey. And, um, I think throughout all of those surveys, we heard words like increased rigor, increased opportunities, the need for recruiting and retaining high-quality staff, um, the need for more individualized attention for our students that sometimes plays out in our not being able to meet our targeted class sizes. We started, uh, planning team work sessions to look at the strategic plan and the development of that. Five of those were held in the summer. Uh, there was one community forum on strategic planning. Then we gathered feedback from the PAC committee on the street strategic planning draft. Um, we provided the board with an opening of schools and equity report, which gives updates on, oh, everything from where we are with student achievement to our program participation, to the engagement levels of our students, to the, some of the needs and wants of our families. Um, we had a budget development committee report on options for referendum, and we then held in October, three community forums on, on having the community help us to identify district needs. What we found in those, uh, forums is that they were, the, the majority, I would say, of attendees were staff. And the parents and community members who came also provided in, input and information, uh, for the board. June and July of two thousand and fifteen, um, cost estimates were established, and these were based on our district's historical cost data and square footage needs. And again, this goes back to that deferred maintenance that is showing up in the five-year capital improvement plan. And some of these things, again, address safety and security. In November two thousand and fifteen, uh, the board reviewed input of the community forums on referendum planning. Um, you've viewed, uh, the calendar approved by the budget development committee to discuss referendum needs and planning. And the budget development committee reports to the board about shaping a referendum question or question. And at that time, the committee asked the board for feedback about additional information, uh, that might be needed to determine questions. We moved to last month, um, where the board reviewed the feedback from the various stakeholders about the draft of the strategic plan. There was an update on the compensation committee. At our last meeting, I think the board had a discussion about the information that had been requested in terms of identified needs for targeted class size, technology, facilities, educational programming. Again, the need to recruit and retain high-quality staff, and that big elephant in the room, the cost of having an adequate and sustainable compensation plan for our employees. Then the board reviewed the three types of referendum questions and indicated a need for recommendations from the compensation committee related to cost. That is a kind of a missing piece of this referendum, uh, package. So, um, we come to that period of time, that's three hundred days to one hundred and eighty days before the election. Um, this is a time to gather additional feedback. It's a time to take the information that you've already gathered, and hold some special meetings at each of the buildings to discuss specific impact at each building of a referendum. I think what, in going forward, the question the board has to ask itself is do we have internal unity on how a referendum is to be shaped? Um, and when we talk about internal unity, I want to take you back to the spring when the deficit was, uh, projected. And at that time, most of the conversation was about how we would meet that budget deficit, how we would make up for that, um, missing money. Um, but as we began to talk about referendum, the conversation shifted a little bit. And it shifted from just kind of making do, and, uh, the word became like, do we need to thrive instead of survive? And what could we be as a district if we had funding similar to other school districts of our size or within our area? Um, how could we potentially improve student achievement, services, compensation, the things that we need to have a really high-performing school district? So, you know, we're at the point, I think, where sometime January eighteenth or our first board meeting in February, the board could discuss the next steps and potentially approve, uh, really approve a proposed timeline instead of just kind of, you know, continuing to, to talk about whether or not we should move to referendum. Um, what would need to happen, uh, would be, I'm going to go back, um, to the previous slide, is that in this time from February, or late January, February, March, April, May, you would want to have these additional meetings and go back to the, the targeted discussion that you had at the last board meeting, sharing with the public and with, uh, the people in these school, in the specific schools, how referendum might be shaped, how the question might be asked, and get specific feedback, um, about those areas. Um, again, trying to build that internal unity about what the priorities for the referendum would be. Uh, in doing that, you'd come up to the, the May, um, portion where you would, you would really start to think about, uh, specific costs, review the reaction of initial information meetings, identify areas needing emphasis or additional attention. Um, we would hope, and I'll look at Kay and say this, we would hope that the compensation committee would have their recommendations ready at that time, which I think would get us to that, uh, better analysis of cost data. And I think you would want to finalize the scope of projects. And when I say that, um, do you want to go to a referendum which addresses the maintenance, the safety and security issues of the facilities? Or do you want to include bigger projects, uh, like the, uh, modernization of South? Or the, uh, addressing the issues, overcrowding issues and capacity needs at Roosevelt? Um, and then, between June eighth and August twenty-fifth, you would then begin to develop your materials, your fact sheet, your FAQs and needs, updating your district webpages, um, confirming your key presentations with community groups and deciding who would do those, preparing your press releases, and, um, seeking endorsements from key community, uh, members. The target date to adopt the official, uh, resolution would be August fifteenth. Because you're required to file an adopted referendum ballot resolution uh, with municipal clerks at least seventy days prior to the election. And you would need to indicate a specific amount and the purpose of the referendum. Then, um, after that, uh, August twenty-third to November seventh, that's when you conduct your referend- uh, information campaigns. You would mail and distribute informational materials, post social media updates and webpage information, have those key meetings, uh, and, uh, as a board, part of your role would be to promote, uh, the referendum. And for the staff, it would be to provide the information. Uh, going into October of two thousand and sixteen, uh, you would have to set a time and place to hold the October public hearing on the adoption of your budget. And at that time, we're suggesting, uh, October twenty-fourth, you would include the referendum, uh, information update, uh, at that public hearing and give people an opportunity, uh, to have, I guess, a few last words about the referendum. Um, and then you would get to election day. And your referendum outcome would be determined. So, at this point, let's take a little pause before we go into a communication strategy and maybe have, uh, give you an opportunity to have either questions or a little bit of discussion.
Is the budget committee set to kind of discuss that timeline before the board approves it? Just so that they can, um, be fine-tuning it?
Yes, we are trying to find a date before the, uh, January eighteenth meeting so that the budget development committee can discuss this timeline and make some recommendations to you.
And then I guess, um, I think the, the more concrete we can get, I mean, we've got, we, we know all of the kind of possibilities, and it was just nailing down the dollar amounts, that we have some specific, you know, a bulleted list of technology. Here's, you know, the range, and if we're going to just get by versus here's our, you know, what we really think we need. And people just start talking about that bulleted list, what's in, what's out on the facilities plan. Do you know, what, what should be included this time, what can wait for, for another time? So that there's actual dollar amounts, and people, you know, can start wrapping their head around what's in and what's out. Because, you know, there's some of us that say, all right, let's put it all in. But then when you just look at the bottom number, you know, hopefully it's not bigger than that Chippewa number that they put out there. Um, but that, then people can actually begin to make those decisions. Because ultimately, yeah, we want everything to be in, but the public may not support that. So then you'd start to, to shift that a little bit and, and, you know, some things are going to rise to the top or not. But, um, of course, I'm going to, you know, express my, I like to get things done, just, you know, go forward with it. And I, you know, I think we're, I'm very frustrated, maybe others are not as frustrated, that we don't have all that information now. Because I, you know, I think we were thinking for the next three months, we would be going out there and explaining it to people. And so, I think two very specific things that we, you know, I just, we need to be aware of by delaying for six months is, if they pass that legislation where we can only go once every year or once every two years, I mean, that really puts us as a disadvantage for the future. And we've, by delaying six months, we're already delaying a whole year's worth of budgets. So, if we had gone in April, we could be talking about the sixteen-seventeen school year. But now we're going to have to go into fund balance again, um, for sixteen-seventeen. And, you know, I hope that we don't just continue to kick the can down the road, um, because there, I, I still feel like there's some compensation fixes that could be done, um, reshuffling. And even if it's for a year, we're not going to send any board members to the national convention. Or we're not going to send administrators out to, you know, if you do similar professional development or things, that we cut back in some of those areas so that we can put in, I mean, last time we saw a figure, there was only five figures, um, to make whole our support staff. Well, you know, we're talking about fifteen thousand dollars, we can find that. So, for sixteen-seventeen, we've already, we're disadvantaging ourselves because we can't do anything about a whole nother year's budget by waiting until November.
So, can I just interrupt you?
Sure.
Here, just for a minute. So, um, Abby and I have been talking about this, um, this idea of, of what it would mean uh, to delay to twenty, uh, to November twenty-sixteen. And we've been investigating whether or not, if we were able to pass a referendum on the eighth, if on the ninth and tenth, we could take some actions that would help us to be able to address it in the next budget. And Abby, can you talk a little bit about what you've discovered?
Sure. What I've learned is that, um, based upon the date of the election, next year it's a little bit late, but what, what we would have to do is bring to the board by November first, basically two budgets. One, assuming a passed referendum for sixteen-seventeen, and one, assuming a not-passed referendum for sixteen-seventeen. And it would be approved, and there would be some language that it's a conditional approval. And so then, we would proceed with the, um, referendum on the eighth. We'd have to canvass it on the ninth. And then we'd either have to have a special board meeting, or authority would have to be passed to Dr. Hardbeck or myself to certify the levy, because that has to be certified to the municipalities on November tenth. So, we're talking two days, basically a day when you think about polls are open late. Um, but by doing that, we could actually affect the sixteen-seventeen school year, and so we wouldn't have to go into fund balance another year. Um, we are still, I talked with Legal today and just to confirm that my understanding was correct, and I wanted to make sure we had the timelines correct. And so, it's something we want to talk about more at Budget Development Committee meeting, and that's why it's really important for us to be able to meet in the next week or so. Um, but I think that, I'm sure, because the timeline is very short and because we have to come forward with two options for a budget and approve it, you know, you could have the same budget, one, just changing the tax levy and the computer. budget, one, just changing the tax levy and the computer rate based upon a passed referendum, and one, assuming you're going to go into working capital. Or you could have two different versions, you know, if a passed referendum, you have additional revenue with your tax levy, and then you have one with, okay, we didn't pass the referendum and we need to make cuts. And so I think those are some very important conversations that we need to have. But if this is what we, if what you decide that you want to do is go in November, we actually do have the option to make it affect 1617. Yeah, I found it very interesting as well. But, so we will have more information on that. We're working on the fine-tuning of it, and we'll talk about it at Budget Development Committee, because I think it's very important for us to research.
Thank you. And you won't go crazy in the meantime?
I'm going to try not to.
Trying to do two budgets almost.
Yeah.
Okay. I had this conversation with Dan before he left. It's going to be very difficult if it does not pass. I understand that we're going to need to have two budgets done, but I do want to clarify that if we do not have it pass, we will be going into fund balance.
I just wanted a bit of an update. Obviously, it's one of the huge inputs in this, and one of the reasons for some of the breakdown is the compensation committees, the kind of the timeline of that and how things have evolved. What do you, Kay, what do you kind of foresee down the next couple of months? What do you anticipate to see? And then, you know, kind of following up with what we talked about in the last board meeting, which is other ways to work without the facilitator from WASB, other ways to meet separately or, you know, kind of work through this?
Abby and I spoke with Bob Butler today and set up a timeframe for our next meeting with, when he'll be here and be present. And that will be later this month, so we'll have an opportunity to pull people together yet in January. We did talk last time about having the opportunity to do some of that, you know, off-of-salary schedule work without Bob, and then being able to pull in whatever work the committee comes up with into the conversations with Bob to try to save some time. I would anticipate that the timeline that Dr. Hardbeck laid out in terms of the work for the committee, that we'd be able to have that finalized by then.
Are you saying May, like May or earlier? By then, what does that mean?
It's so hard to say, because every time we get together, what we think we're going to do winds up, you know, detouring and becoming different options that we hadn't considered because people bring new information to the table and new ideas to the table, which kind of takes us down, not necessarily a rabbit hole, but has us investigate something that we weren't originally thinking of. So it's really hard to pinpoint that if it would be earlier than May, but I wouldn't expect it would be any later than May.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that would be a very important timeline to meet, because the Board would have to meet in July of 2016 to have a work session to discuss the scope of the referendum. And that's where the specifics would come into play with the question and the costs and being able to really nail down what it is that you're asking for. So without that compensation piece, you know, we might have to go to Plan B, as Wendy Sue talked about.
Commissioner Rovell?
Well, my main concern is that last time, we really, really pushed for getting the information coming out of the compensation studies. And there was a recommendation that we don't wait until the facilitator's presence. We need to be able to be more aggressive and come up with meeting that we can conduct on our own, so that we meet that deadline before May. May to August to do the data analysis, I think will not give sufficient time for us to meet with the community. So I really, really want to push that we get the data out from the compensation committee so we can work on this sooner than May.
I think it's safe to say the entire Board feels that way. Yes? Any other comments?
My other question is, so I'm in the Budget Committee, the timeline that is being referred to, how different that is compared to the timeline that we saw just now?
And if I could just, if I could just address that. And again, I think that when we started down this road, talking about referendum, we're talking about how to compensate for the deficit that was being projected by Mr. Van De Water. And within that conversation, and I want to say that it started about maybe August or September, when we were presenting the budget, that the conversation began to be about what else we could do. And once you begin to make those considerations about technology and other maintenance programs, kind of going back to a little bit about what demographic and trends recommended with the maintenance piece and with the projects, then it is a little bit of a different conversation. And I think that without having a specific message to take to the community about our needs, and without having that internal unity about how we should proceed, that it was very difficult to shape a referendum question.
Well, wouldn't you say it's been a little difficult to get all these pieces put together?
Yes.
And I know you spoke before about internal unity, that that was a very important piece that we need to make sure we have in place too.
Because I think one of the things that we've heard in the trainings that we've had about referendum planning is the internal unity piece is key, because we all have to agree and kind of go in the same direction in terms of the information that's shared, the message that we send, the reasons why we're going for referendum, and what those funds are specifically going to be used to do. And that's a piece that I, I think we're getting there, but I don't think we're there quite yet.
Commissioner Rovell?
Okay, as far as unity, thank you for bringing it back up. I'm still for the hybrid, which consists of an operational referendum with a piece that's for bricks and mortars. I think that's what the Board was agreeing on before the delay. And then this should go without saying, but I want this PowerPoint before my next budget meeting. Please.
Yeah, it'll be uploaded tonight for you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I think too, you know, when I think back to September, when we were having those conversations, it came from our staff too, in the sense that they, they didn't want to maintain anymore. I mean, we've tried to maintain kind of, sort of since, well, 90, probably early 2000s, you know, as we did all the cuts. And, you know, it's a matter of who we are as a district, that we want to be the best we can possibly be. And I think that's how we hold our staff, how we get the best and the brightest to come here. It's a testament to school funding in the sense that it's so broken. So I think as a district, we have to stand for who we are and convey those things to our community. And I think we've started well, and hopefully with the compensation piece, it'll be transparent enough that it isn't, it isn't necessarily about the money and the compensation as much as where does Eau Claire sit in comparison to all the other districts and in the top 10 size districts? There's lots of information there that we have to get out for people to understand that.
Thanks for that, because we have made do for many, many years, and many people have done without.
I'm a little perplexed that, you know, that it seems that the Board's conversation changed, because maybe we just didn't articulate it well enough, or maybe it's that people come into the conversation at different points. And so, you know, things that we kind of assume everybody has heard is new information. Because, you know, I got on right after the last operational failed. And really, ever since that time, it was, well, there's things we'd like to do for kids, there's things we'd like to do for families, there's things we'd like to do for teachers, and all of those things that we do for kids is good for the community, but we just can't afford to do it. And so, you know, I'm a little frustrated, but then maybe it's that we just didn't articulate that and remind ourselves that, well, we can't, you know, if we want to keep sports in the middle schools and high schools, well, we're going to have to have these great big fees that are, you know, four and eight times as much as neighboring districts. And if we, you know, we want to have these field trips, but the alternative is, we're going to, you know, increase class sizes, well, then we're going to go without some field trips or expect our parent groups to be funding those. So, you know, when the economy tanked, you know, people could accept the fact that everybody's salaries were going to be frozen. Well, the economy recovered, people like five years ago, anybody read the unemployment statistics? It's, you know, we're down around 3% and 4%, which I think economists would still say is, you know, basically structural, you know, there's no unemployment, it's just that structural 3% is, you know, is always going to be there. So I think that we've, you know, we've kind of got stuck in that, you know, failed referendum, economy tank mindset, and then all these new people came to this table and into the district office, and we forgot that here's all the things we'd really like to do, but we don't have the money for. So, you know, I know that conversation was going on, and it just obviously reemerged in the last six months. And, you know, Dan was our, you know, very conservative, you know, forecaster, and I would always say, "Dan, it's not realistic to give us a 0% because we're not going to accept that." You know, our bottom line should be, we need to give people, you know, at least a cost of living increase, so their wage, real wages don't go down. So I think the conversation was there, and it just was maybe assumed by people who had been in the conversation longer than others. So clearly, this community wants to do the best it can for its kids, not just hobble along under these revenue limits that are clearly broken.
Thank you. Commissioner Rovell?
Thank you. I share your frustrations, Wendy Sue. I think that much of this breakdown has come down to the planning, leadership, and kind of the ownership piece on all of our part. I think our Board is a unified front here. I think that the staff are a unified front when we talk about these things. They agree with us, they want to see these things happen, they want to see thriving happen. I think the kids, certainly the ones that are civic, you know, that they're civic-minded and they're engaged like the ones sitting there, they are on board with us, parents are on board with us. So with this process, we really now, we have no excuse at this point. We have to be so on top of this, and as a Board, we have to completely own this and hold every single person accountable with this going on, because the future of this district seriously depends on it. And because I know what we want to see make happen, I know what we believe, we have to have plans in motion, goals in motion, and we need to hold ourselves and our district accountable to those plans.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm going to ask for a public comment, if anyone cared to comment on this plan.
Carolyn Gabrielson Barstead, 2002 Redwood Drive. We just moved, Eau Claire. Had to think about that a minute. Being involved in the last referendum, I think, gave me a very different perspective than I had to start out with that group. But it seems to me there has to be an even division between bricks and mortar and the staff being compensated as they should be. And I think that's really key to making this real to everybody in the community, that we can't go overboard one way or go overboard the other way. I think we really have to look at the schools where there are safety needs, there are situations that have to be taken care of. And the public, if you recall last referendum, when we redid the three elementary schools, and the public came out to the open houses when they were finished, and a lot of people felt very good about that, because it was where the kids are and where they're being treated as students and people and learning. And the other part of that is, we need those excellent teachers. We need the staff in the schools to give the kids everything that they need as they're getting their education. So I think it's really important to just keep thinking, keep that kind of even and don't go way overboard one way or the other.
Thanks, Carolyn. Appreciate it. Personally, I just feel like you're so right about that. And we can't just focus on everybody getting a job at McDonald's. Education is really a deep thing, a deep-seated thing in everybody, and we want to bring that out in every child. And we can't just talk about the surface learning. I mean, there's, these are lifetime goals for the kids and the families. I'm preaching to the choir, I know.
And I wasn't planning to speak to this issue, but when Commissioner Johnson talked about this conversation that's been happening and happening and happening, I thought back to Act 10, and when, and Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Dux were very much involved. The Board had the courage to say, "No, we're not going to, we're not going to do this to staff. Our staff is more important. Our compensation is important, our retention and recruitment is important. We'll take whatever hits we have to take in order to maintain a fair and appropriate compensation program." And so we basically defied Act 10 for a whole year, and that was back in 2011, right? Do you know that you have been talking about compensation adjustments as a Board since 2011, and nothing has changed, nothing has been done? And I just, I think Commissioner Johnson, that's what you're talking about. Somehow, you have to turn this conversation into action, because you're losing people who care deeply about this district, and they care deeply about their family, and they're making those kinds of choices, and it's not fair. It's simply not fair to this community in the long range to do this. And so I was disappointed when I heard that you were looking at a potential referendum in November rather than April, because I think this community is ready to say, "It's time to support public education." And I don't know, and I understand that I haven't been privy to a lot of these discussions and the planning and timelines and things like that, but we've been doing this since 2011. The time is ripe. We need to take some action now so that this community has the opportunity to say, "I believe in what this district has done, I believe in our staff, I believe in fair compensation, and I believe I will support that in the name of public education." And I just wanted to echo your comments, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. Because I feel the same as Commissioner Johnson, we've been doing this a very long time.
So let's talk about a strategy for communicating about a referendum. Some of this is a little bit philosophical, and other parts of it are quite concrete in the steps that we need to take. You know, as a strategy, we need to be clear about communicating, about the difference between communicating about the referendum and promoting the referendum. And as you know by law, some of our abilities to advocate for the referendum as administrators and staff is... and staff is very structured. But the communication strategy is about understanding the referendum and helping the public to understand the referendum. And I think that's a role that the staff can take on, administrators can take on quite effectively. Promotion of the plan is for building the support of it, and that's where the advocacy piece comes in. And that's where the board is going to have to work with our volunteers, our parents who have, and staff members who have said that they will come forward to work on the planning for the building support. So we talk about community and informational matters about the referendum, and it should be ongoing and be fostered by the school board and staff, and promoting should be targeted and specific and could be spearheaded by board members and community members who are able to take on advocacy roles for a referendum. So what should the strategy include? It should identify the needs, the cost of meeting those needs, and the effect on the taxpayer. And that typically comes about through a fact sheet that is distributed widely within the community. Each element of a referendum will require further explanation in terms of its impact to students, to facilities, and to the larger community. And again, those are fact sheets that can go out based on specifics. For example, technology. For example, safety and security. What do those items include specifically? Once you determine the referendum question, then we can have a series of meetings and presentations with employees at each school, the central office buildings and grounds, and employee associations to make sure that our internal customers are fully informed about how the referendum is structured and what will happen. Then we need to do additional presentations that will need to be developed for family and community groups to talk with them about how the question was determined. And this is the key point. And I think you've all been kind of talking about that, the consequences of what happens if it doesn't pass. And that's a piece, I think, if we do decide that we're going to present two budgets, what will those two budgets look like?
It'd be what do those two budgets look like and what do those two consequences
In terms of promoting the referendum, I think that with the work that has been done on the strategic plan, we want to bring that to you sometime in February with the changes that you've requested and try to get approval on the plan because I think the plan and the deferred facility needs need to be in the forefront as you make decisions about the referendum question. It should be tied to those two elements. And when you think about the priorities that you have discussed, almost all of the priorities that you have talked about in your referendum discussions are embedded into that strategic plan and also into your goals as a school board. We need to remind people of our mission when we're talking with them. We need to post and refer to the needs assessments that were done by demo and trends, by the architects, by staff in terms of projecting, whether it's targeted class size or technology needs or programming needs, and really provide concrete examples at presentations and with social media, such as what does the use of technology for student learning look like in an ECASD classroom? What does an aging roof or a playground in need of paving, what does that look like? What effect does that have on a student's experience? I would suggest that you use a four-pronged approach and really be clear about the message that you're taking. And that's the work that will need to take place from June until August 25th. As you finalize that question and finalize that list of needs, you want to be able to seek endorsements from key community stakeholders. We need to develop action plans and materials to publicize the needs of the district and its outcomes on the community. And there's just a list of things that could be included in those materials. And that's a list of things that other school districts have used within their communication strategies. And we have numbers of examples of those kinds of things that we can draw on. We need to develop presentations which are aligned for key stakeholders so, again, that we can be clear about our message. And link those presentations to the district webpages for viewing because we won't be able to talk to everyone. So we need to have a way for people to access that information if they're not able to come to a public presentation. And then I think another key point is that we want to connect with community leaders and organizations in the community that share similar missions to ours and that depend on us to help them meet their missions. And I think that's a real key piece of that strategy. So this would be the timeline for developing the action plans for each of the four areas, what would need to be done, and then, you know, your discussion about what you would want to see. But, you know, we see the staff as creating those committees for fact sheets and informations and webpages and things like that. But in terms of, again, the advocacy piece, asking people to support the referendum, that's, I think, an area that the board's really going to have to take on with some of our citizens committees. And Commissioner Loganville and I were talking this morning about some of the citizens that have come forward and who are willing to help with promoting the referendum. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Well, I'll say too, you know, with the staff, that's a big point because I know many staff members who aren't really supportive of a referendum right now because of, you know, cultural considerations or morale or the current climate. And that's something that we, as a board, really, again, in our ownership of this, it's really huge because these are our champions day in and day out, and they are going to need to be partners in this referendum to really reform things. But kind of segueing with the marketing group, well, it's really, for those of you that know Promote the Vote, it was a group that we had, citizens, staff, parents, retired folks, business people. We brought a lot of the old band back together and have some new folks too. And we've kind of rebranded in our discussions and our meetings. It's called Support Eau Claire Schools now. And really, the, one of the common things that we hear, whether it's a referendum year or not, is people in the community say, well, why are you just doing outreach when you want money? When you want more money? You know, why aren't you doing this on a more continuing basis? So that's really one of the goals of the group, is to have a real, permanent place in the community, to promote the schools, to share information, to have, you know, letter writers, to have advocates, to have people going to events, to have fundraisers, to have recognition things, to really have a kind of an advocacy wing apart from the school district, but working in concert with them to promote a quality system. So, you know, one thing, you know, I hear from some board members about how they want to get involved. And, you know, obviously due to quorum, quorum issues, we can't be all there at the same time. But I think it would be really helpful for the board to schedule a work session pretty soon to talk about where we see our personal strengths in promoting a referendum and in the community organizing, in the advocacy. Because one part of this group is there are different committees. There's finance people who are raising money. There's marketing, which I'm a part of. So I really think for us as a board to see where we can get plugged in pretty early on and be a part of that process. But it's a really great group, and I really want to emphasize that it's very few who are kind of taking the helm that are leaders. We're trying to back off and not have it really be district, district people per se. So one of them is a parent who's, she works in PR during the day. Another guy, he works for Life Touch. So really getting people that are just supporters of the system, maybe have kids who've gone through or are currently in it, we really see that as a huge part.
I'm sorry. I was going to thank Dr. Harabek for her presentation. There is a meeting this week, right?
There is. I'll be there.
I have a question. I don't remember adopting the strategic plan. What's the plan to adopt it and when?
We heard the plan, but I don't know if we officially adopted it.
That in itself is going to address the question of mission and statement.
Right.
If we don't have mission statement, how can we be promoting in the community when we don't know what we are doing or what we value?
Well, we know it, but we haven't voted on it, I don't think.
Need to put it on the agenda and vote on.
All right. Let's talk about it, agenda setting. Did we miss that? Anything else, board members? We have, we'll go on to our next item on the agenda.
While that's getting pulled up, I can just mention the changes that we did make, and they were, were we waiting for, were we still waiting for legal on this one?
I thought this was new.
No, yeah, I'm just, in terms of the committee, were we still waiting for legal on it? Do we have?
Not on this one. I think we had some changes last board meeting on this. There were a couple of things, and we corrected those. So we're ready for our first reading, if you're ready. I was waiting to hear if there were any corrections, further corrections. Are you ready for the first reading?
Audience, are you ready?
I think you go home right now. Commissioner Loganville.
Okay. The board believes that evaluation is essential to the continual improvement and ongoing success of our school district. Therefore, once a year, the board shall conduct a self-evaluation of its performance and its progress toward annual board goals. With this in mind, the board shall plan for and conduct its self-evaluation to be held in December or January of each year in alignment with the superintendent's evaluation and goals update. A work session for the board shall be scheduled for this purpose. Consistent with the open meetings law, the board's self-evaluation shall be conducted in open session. All board members are expected to participate in the self-evaluation process, as is the superintendent. The areas of board responsibility and relationships that will be evaluated as part of the board's annual self-evaluation include but are not limited to the board's governance structure and school board goals, meeting management, conduct, attendance, and decision-making processes, policy development and implementation, fiscal oversight and resource allocation, and facility stewardship, oversight of accountability measures in alignment with the district's strategic plan, monitoring of student achievement, board member development, board and superintendent relations, community engagement and collaboration, and board legislative involvement and advocacy. The board's self-evaluation shall be carried out in conjunction with the annual evaluations of the superintendent and the executive directors. The board's self-evaluation process provides an opportunity for the board to reflect on its performance in relation to stated goals, priorities, and board governance policies. The process also provides input for setting board goals for the following year.
Why?
Are there any comments from the public? Oh, I'm sorry. I can't see your light.
That's okay. I was just going to ask, how come we have December or January? Why not just one?
To provide flexibility. We just needed a little.
It gets busy around this time of the year. Evaluation process for the superintendent.
We have the superintendent's evaluation in December, so we thought maybe we might need to stretch it into January.
So why can't we just stick with January this year? And if it doesn't work next time, change it.
Well, I could give a smart answer, but the Policy and Governance Committee is overloaded at the moment, but... So do you prefer to have January?
I prefer that we stick with one date so that we are not giving the excuse not to be on time.
I would just say that I'm in favor of flexibility because you just never know what's going to happen from year to year. And this is something that, I mean, like, certain things are very time-bound. They have to happen, non-renewals and renewals and open enrollment and those sorts of things. And so the board's self-eval, to me, isn't something that is dictated by a particular deadline or timeline. And so as long as we have a policy that says we're going to do it once a year, to me, that's good enough.
Commissioner Vu, you can make an amendment. According to Dr. Harabek, you can make an amendment and still bring it forward for a resolution next, next meeting.
No, I would defer to veterans, board.
Thank you.
He means by experience, not age.
Commissioner Harabek, I mean, handbook board.
I just wanted to note that at the bottom, as far as one of the resources, that we do have a governance model now as a school board, which we're pretty proud of, and it's key work of school boards. So it's listed on there now, and I think that's partly where this, some of this was coordinated from.
Is there any public input? They don't care. You don't care. It's in the policy that it would be either December or January. Do you care?
So sometime this month?
Well, I believe it's next year. I believe we're going to do it next year. Because our agenda, agenda are already set for this month. Sorry about that.
Yeah, and it says right on the policy, January 2016, right on there.
Is the board ready to bring this to resolution at the next meeting on January 18?
Yes.
We'll have Discussion Impossible First Reading of Policy 185 Board Committee Structure. I will say, I'm sorry that President Spindler is not here because I think he would have a lot of, a lot to say about this, but let's go ahead and start the discussion.
I'm confused because nothing's in yellow, and I've seen a board committee description before. So how is this different from what we've had?
Commissioner Loganville.
We haven't made any changes. We wanted to bring it to the full board because this is an area where we've, we've had, you know, we have a lot of rabbit holes in P and G, and we keep coming back to the structure of our committees as one of those, whether it's who's the chairperson of the committee, how is that person selected, you know, what is the structure of that committee, and even the description of some of them. So we just felt that it was too big of a discussion to just have in our committee, and we wanted to bring it to everyone.
Yes. So some committees have chairs and secretaries, and some do not have any. My question is, how many committees should we be on? And usually, we've taken the Budget Committee and the Policy Committee are the main ones, and everybody's on one of those. Some, two committees, like the Policy and Demo and Trends, includes community people. The PAC, Parent Advisory Committee, is also community-based. So, pardon me. And the Gifted Advisory Committee is... And the Gifted Advisory Committee is also community-based. How many committees do you serve on? You know, it's quite a few when you look at it.
We also have another standing committee of the board now for Charter Choice.
Yeah, we have not, I made notes on-
That was another piece, was we have to add it to this.
We haven't put those other committees on, like Charter Choice Programming Committee. The Eau Claire Public School Foundation Board, I serve on that, Dr. Harbeck serves on it, but Shared Services is also, it's on there, but I think, but it's not classified in any way. And some of us serve on the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Committee ASAP.
And there's Healthy Communities.
Yeah, there's a lot of other things that we serve on. So I just wondered if you have a structure in mind of how we assign these committees, how they're structured, how their chair, the Policy and Governance Committee, wanted to get some idea from you, how you felt about how we do these assignments and structure.
Like, okay, so, one issue is, these are the board committees, and so there are committees that the Policy Committee has identified as needing to be added, like the Charter Choice, because that's a board committee that we've created. So clearly, if there are board committees, they need to be added to this list. Sounds like you also would like to include a list, whether it's in the rule attached to this or in the policy itself, perhaps it belongs in the rule, because that's more evolving, of committees that board members serve on, because those aren't board committees, those are committees that have invited a board member to, you know-
Participate.
Right. So that list should be probably in the attached rules. So if we're looking at just this structure, it sounds like one question is, should a chair, should the, should there a mechanism for appointing a chairperson be identified in the policy? And so there's some consistency within the board committees. We already have a mechanism, the president shall appoint, and if we don't like the way the president appoints, I suppose we can elect a new president, or give him some guidance. So I guess I don't know that we need necessarily a procedure, because I think as soon as you, the more parameters you create, saying each board member will serve on two of these committees, well, then what if one person doesn't show up at all to the Policy Committee say? Then the Policy Committee has a difficult time doing its job, where, you know, in any particular year, you're going to have a different makeup of the board, and sometimes people are more available and are willing to do more work on the committees. And so I guess I'm not inclined to put more parameters, such as, you know, we'll serve on this many, or whatever, and I'm perfectly happy with the president appointing.
I think that's a good policy myself, and I think we all have a choice to request what committee we want, we'd like to serve on. So we just wanted to bring this issue up, because it's, some committees are served by a chair and have minutes, and others do not. So that, I think that's more the issue.
Yes. The, I think what you're talking about with some of the, you know, the other community committees, I think it makes sense to have those in the rules. To me, the main, the main two areas, I kind of thought we were bringing this to talk about, were the chair of the committees, and how that was to be designated. And maybe that's just adding right under, you know, where it talks about the president of the board shall appoint, subject to approval, standing committees, and their designated chairperson at the meeting. You just add something like that. And then the other piece was to actually add what we just passed as a new policy, which is the Charter Choice innovation as a standing committee. So I saw those as the two that we really need to make changes on.
But we also had the discussion about the chair and Robert's Rules order, and the procedures within the committee, that they were more formalized, so that we were more transparent to our community relative to those committees. So that was also another conversation about making-
And more consistent.
Yeah, yeah.
We need consistency. What is your feeling about what the standing board committees are? We appointed the Charter Choice program, and I think that needs to be on there.
I, two things. I believe that that need to be added, the third committee, the Policy and the Budget. And then second thing is, there is a balance, imbalance of committee members, as the way it is. We have seven members, and there are only three, there are three in Policy, and there are only two in Budget. Currently, there are three members in Budget, and it's working well. But in the bylaw, it says two in Budget. That's not correct. We need to have at least three.
Three, okay. Yeah, I didn't realize that you only had two before. Okay. Okay. Anything else?
I agree, it should be three.
Thanks.
Yes, let's add the Charter Choice to this. I would, I would also like to see more consistency, because I know that Policy and Governance, Joe has brought it before, where you guys are picking a chair and, you know, going that route. But as for a budget, we haven't done anything like that. I didn't feel like there was a need. Of course, we also have Rich on there, and he usually keeps us, you know, on our timeline, so. But I would like to see it be more standard, so then we all know what to expect. Because I've gone to, I have other committees as well, such as the PAC, and we have a chair and a co-chair, you know. So I would like to see more, you know, just more consistency.
Thank you.
So, so what you're telling us, then, is that we should look to make it more consistent on having a chair, and the fact that we keep our notes, and that we do Robert's Rules?
I'm saying is, if we're going to do that for one, let's do it for all of them. If we're not going to do that, and we're going to just go with the route, where the president is just going to pick somebody, then we're going to go with that.
Okay. Okay, good. Is that sufficient? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving along. Requests for future agenda items.
Just me again.
Just kicked me there.
It's, are we going to have another work session coming up? Is, I'm just-
On the 18th?
Yeah, about, yeah, just because we've got some work to do with the referendum and pulling pieces back together.
I would suggest not on the 18th. President Spindler is, has expressed that he may not be here.
I didn't mean the 18th, but coming up shortly, I'm thinking.
I agree. Sooner the better.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This program is recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television.
Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067, or on the web at www.cbcTV.org.